The order. Thank you. This is our committee of the whole meeting, August the 18th of 2020. Roll call, please.
Don.
Here.
Larry.
Here.
Gene.
Here.
Tommy. Arthur.
Yeah.
Amber.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll go through our pledge of allegiance. If you would please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands in its nation under God.
God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, counsel. And at this time, let's add Tommy Granada into our meeting as being in attendance. Next, we'll have an approval over our agenda.
Gene.
Yes, sir.
Can I have you add one item, please?
Yes, sir.
Item E under new business, discussion mending our water and sewer budget.
Which one was that again, James?
Kenny.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take off item 10A, discussion on offsetting water rates.
That's correct.
I spoke to Mr. Agnew today, and we're not totally prepared for that discussion right now.
Yes, sir. Okay, and James, what was yours for E?
Discussion water and sewer budget. Commendation.
Any other additions or changes?
Then we're going to scratch out on new business. A.
Yes, sir. Now, we will look for an approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
First, of second. I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Yeah.
Larry.
Yeah.
Gene.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yeah.
Don.
Here.
Amber.
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. And counsel, I'll give you just a moment. You can look over our previous month's minutes. And. We.
We approved the June.
We still had our financials and everything out there, didn't we? Okay, so let's skip and go on to our monthly financials. Turn this over around it.
Okay, let's see. You guys have our new balance sheet look, and basically that is going to be the bottom line. But what I'm going to do is give a little bit more detail with the one that I have. This is for July 2020. For the general fund, the revenue was 300, 1,008,092. Expenses was 121,914. That left an income balance of a positive 179,89572. For the water and sewer, the revenue was 433,64760. Expenses were 294,88473. With a gross income of 138,76287, minus 108,16945. That is for our bonds. That left a positive income of 30,59342. On the street, the revenue was 22,4265. Expenses were 26,97929, with a negative 4,55264.
Any questions from counsel? Both are expenses again on that.
On which one?
On the street.
The street was 294,88473.
Any questions from counsel? Thank you. Next, we'll have a comment from citizens. If you have a comment, please step to the podiums, update your name, street address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Please. None? Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to our departmental reports. And next, we will have our chief, Corey Jensen.
Real quick before I jump into our report, I'll make a quick announcement. After 40 years of law enforcement service, Officer Michael Belzner is retiring at the end of the month. I say it will be August 31st. So, I'm up here, Mike, real quick. Got a plaque for him for his 40 years of service for over multiple departments in several states. Quite an accomplishment, especially in today's world to make it 40 years. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good, good point. Thank you.
Also have a cake for him in the break room. They save you guys any after this. Welcome to it. For July, we responded to 489 calls for service, filed 13 accident reports. There were 42 warrants released with an outstanding. 579 on our warrants with an amount of 663,658.50 in outstanding time. A total of 173 citations issued, 15 for speeding, 46 were for criminal violations, 15 were for city ordinance, and 16 were for other traffic violations. 91 warnings, 34 were for speed, 49 for other traffic violations, and eight were for city ordinance and property driving. An update, the Star Chase system that we purchased was installed July 20th and 21st. That system is up and running and live. No hiccups with it. Just waiting for opportunity to use it. That's all I have.
Any questions from counsel?
I got one, and I know it's nothing. It's called brand name to us about the Washington County. You might do, I saw here the budget, we're already over our year, but it could.
As a one-time fee, it was an estimated cost of what it would, when we budgeted. Since then, we did a sweet assessment of fine amount, $10, on tickets throughout spring. So, going into next year's, we'll have fun and do it to cover that.
Any other questions, comments from counsel? Thank you, Chief. Next is our fire department and our operations chief, Todd Wegreben.
Well, in July, we had 41 calls for service, 32 in the city and nine in rural areas. In the city, we ran on 13 EMS, three fire calls, three MVAs, seven alarm calls, and six service calls. In the rural area, we had five EMS calls, two fires, one MVA, and one service call. Pretty busy month in July. Any questions? A little more, too, but. Yeah.
Are you pretty.
You know, we're seeing more people in town. You know, the COVID situation has increased some of the calls. We have, you know, have run on a few cases where they were positive. You know, it hasn't, we haven't seen a substantial increase for that type of call.
Are you quick enough to update for you and everything going through?
Yeah, we've got a few things we're working on right now, but nothing too drastic.
This false alarm, this ever, willing to be.
No, not really. Some of those are, we get a call from a homeowner, their batteries are going dead. A lot of them are faulty detectors. You know, they should be replaced every 10 years. A lot of times, we're finding that their detectors, either smoke or CO detectors, are needing to be replaced. It's just malfunctioning because of age. Any other questions?
Thank you, chief. Next is our public works department with James Clark.
Under the building department, planning department, there is a planning board public hearing scheduled for next Tuesday. The first two items that were listed on that hearing have actually been tabled. Those two items are the South Point Phase 3 subdivision and the shipping metals PUD. In the description, I don't know how many of you are aware, but there's these two subdivisions planned on Quince Road. One of them is 181 lots, the other one is 295. Almost a total of 500 lots coming online here fairly quick. It's going to be next, next month now before they get to public hearing. But if people want to have their opinions known, definitely come check into that meeting next month. As far as the public hearing goes, the conditional use permit to the school district is still on, on the agenda. Basically, the school has a conditional use and zoning, so they have to get approved for that. I'm not sure if we've met since we talked to the school last, but they're moving up their timeline. They originally planned to be opening fall of 2022. Their new plan now is to be open fall of next year. So, they're getting ready to light some fires. In the streets, the arts department, a request was made to find out what it would cost to pave South Barrington Road. We've been talking about Arbor Acres and South Barrington, working with the county to, you know, have them do it. A request was made to find out what it would cost to have a contractor do it. If you look at the agenda there, it tells you that 90, it's about 9900, almost 10,000 linear feet, by 22 feet wide. The, the cost to, to do that would be 265,200 dollars to include striping and everything. So, that's just FYI.
I'll dig.
That would be a two-inch overlay. On the water and sewer, we contracted with Trek Design to do some, some more smoke testing of our sewer lines for us. We did a round of it last year and going to finish up this week doing the western half of the city, basically. So, I tried to get the information out and put outdoor hangers. It was on Facebook and also did a co-read notification on that. Hopefully, everyone got notified in some way. There, I know we did get one call today from somebody that had smoke inside their, their business. Obviously, that.
Oh, you probably know all about that freedom. That was it.
Yeah. Anyway, if you do get smoke inside your business or your home, then there's some open vent or sewer line that's, that's letting that smoke in there. So, need to, need to find out where that's coming from and get that sealed up. But if everything goes correctly, there shouldn't be no smoke in any structure. The Highway 412 water line project that was or is budgeted for this year is still moving forward. Arbor is finalizing the, the final layout and conducting record research to determine where we're going to move additional easements. And hopefully, we will have completed plans in 30 to 45 days. With that said, project will obviously not be completed by the end of the calendar year. So, it will spill over into next year's budget. We're also, we're working on a replacement line for Wildcat Creek. Currently, there's a, an old three-inch water line, demo pipe out there, and we've, I think we've put on, I put on here, we've repaired it four times in the last month. Since I wrote that, we've repaired it two more times. And it's, it's just become a real nuisance. So, we're going to see what the budget will allow. You know, we talked about, originally, we wanted to install this 12-inch water line from our new tank all the way to Highway 112. And if the bids come in, you know, where we can do that, we still will. There's a chance we might just go from the tank this year to Barrington Road. This will allow us to get extra fire protection to the area of the new school. Plus, we do have currently, you know, adequate fire protection to the, to the east. As we continue to grow, that line is going to have to be continued all the way to, to 112 at some point.
Is this a bear, is this on the other side of the road?
It is. Yeah. Yeah, currently, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we did, when we were getting water from Springdale, we extended the 12-inch from their meter to 112. And so, that goes back down now to an eight inch. Once it gets past Barrington Road, it actually drops down to a six inch. So, with our water coming in on the west end now, we've got smaller lines going up to bigger lines. So.
What did you say, what size they were putting in, eight inches?
We're putting in a 12.
12 inches.
For starters. The way things are growing, we've got a lot of work that needs to be done over the next few years, water and sewer. And I'm going to be bringing some projects to you probably in the next couple of months to get started. We're going to talk a little bit about an annual utility services contract here later. I'll go over that when we, when we get there. We all know the city's going rapidly. Here's a few numbers to indicate that fact. In, in 2016, our water system consisted of 988 meters. July meter count was 1,845. That's an increase of 87%. Using same timeframe, our number of sewer connections have increased from 183 to 967, or 428%. We all know that we're, we're growing quick, and it's, it's hard to keep up. Any questions?
You bet.
You got questions?
You bet.
Okay.
Two or three. Street department, is that to pave Barrington, will we have to put that out for bids? That's just one quote for one company, correct?
Correct. I was requested to find out what it would cost to have it done. That gives you a ballpark number.
Well, I think we need to discuss whether, we need to put it out for bid, because I know the mayor was pretty adamant about it. So, and.
Let's, let's wait on that until we hear from our, our street survey this evening. And hopefully, he can.
Yeah. That's, well, you've got parks as well of the same category. Any word on any of the monies that the bonds are hurt up on?
Right.
The money that we've been trying to get, any of that stuff? What have we got going on? I mean, can you, do you know? I mean, what, what, the grants, is it wide open? Or are we going for certain things? Are we going for tennis court or tennis court basketball courts? Are we doing other venues for the other playgrounds? I spent some time there the other day, and we're in desire need of a lot of stuff. So, I'm just reiterating my mind of the grant money just for the tennis court, correct?
Mayor, are you still listening?
Yeah. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, currently, what's in process is Mr. Granada did send over several photos to us. The grant that we're applying for is a grant for a matching grant, if you will, I believe, to recondition the current tennis courts. As well as what we're looking at doing is making the Bochi Ball ADA compliant. The gentleman that's overseeing that grant program was up visiting with us a few weeks ago and, and liked what he saw in our park with the Bochi Ball Court. Also, in addition, what we're looking at doing is adding to the disabled portion of our park and adding a disability swing, which would come in at the south end of the current toys that are out there. And then we're also looking at taking out a few of the toys that aren't compliant with current park regulations over on the east end of the park as well. So, you know, to make the park more inclusive, what we're trying to do is work within these grant guidelines to prepare the park, to add these toys to it. The, the award to this grant is going to take some time. Matter of fact, we, it's kind of several rounds. Last year, we did make it to the final round, but unfortunately, we got beat out by just a little bit. So, this year, we revised the grant. We should know probably in the next month or so whether or not we make it into the final rounds again. I believe last year, it was like October, November before we got to go down and make our pitch to that board. So, we should be finding out here pretty soon. Hopefully, if Tiny Town makes it into the final round, then we're going to be utilizing Mr. Granada's pitchers in that packet to go forward with. If I remember, memory serves me right, we're applying for somewhere around 200,000 for the grant for this project. If that answers your question, Mr. Granada.
In that direction. Thanks, sir.
You bet.
And you talked about the road you elect, so this gentleman gets through to the top of that, or we need, we need to find, if the road be able to go or, I don't know if the mayor's got it. Well, that's, you know, a little bit.
Sounds good.
All right.
You got all these.
Another question for you, James.
Yeah.
On Quince Road, do we have the infrastructure water sewer in place to handle these problems that are coming in?
I had that conversation with our engineer today. Sewer, yes. We're probably going to need, in conjunction with the developer, to extend a water line on Quince Road, which we tried to do several years ago. Wasn't able to get accomplished because couldn't get easement from certain property owners out there. But Quince Road is going to have to have a water line. Apparently, there's been a 2-inch water line that feeds the houses on Quince Road.
How far, up to our largest line on Quince? How large is the one that feeds that? And where does it go to? Where does it stop and reduce down in size?
We have a, an eight-inch water line on the south end of Quince Road crossing at Kelly. We also have an eight-inch line coming from the south end of Posa over to Quince. Just need to make that connection between them. And I believe it's roughly 5,000 feet between the two lines.
You want to run, hook them, hook them two together?
Yes. Yeah.
And then water comes from both directions, right?
Correct. We've had the preliminary discussion with the developer on the subdivisions. Currently, South Point Phase 1, Phase 2 are being fed off of Bossinger and Wildcat, which is a six-inch line. So, we're feeding an eight-inch currently with six inch. One of the things we're going to have to do is make a, an interconnect from the new South Point Phase 3 down to Kelly Road. Now, we'll give them more water flow from there, but we also want to make another connection to Quince Road.
Lot of one more, please, true. Maybe go big, eight inch?
Yes. Everything will be a minimum of eight inch.
What did Don?
With the water tank, tower, going out to the fuel station, the electric, the little auxiliary AP units that we have, the generator, has been installed yet or they're working on it?
No, this, I think until the last month, the last coming, we had the, the delivery date on the generators, October 1st.
They have to make them, right?
Right. They don't build them until they sell them. Anything else?
Doing good. Okay, sir.
Thank you, Clark. Next is our Tiny Town Museum Board. Do we have anybody here for museum board? We do not.
Yes, I'm here.
There we are.
Yes, our museum board met on Monday, August 3rd. And we have four main items to discuss. First of all, the museum CD and savings account. Our museum CD matured on July 6th with 214,942.35. Because the CD rates were so low, which were, they were .6 at the time and now. And that encouraged us to, rather than renew the CD and tie the money up at that rate, to move the money to our savings account and hopefully get better CD rates down the road here. So, that's what we did. So, as of the 31st, our CD and savings in, in July was 229,939.4 cents. So, that's what you'll see on the finance reports now, is just our savings account. And our second item, the Third Annual Arkansas Simples Day is Friday, September 18th. We have been invited by Shiloh Museum of Bozark History, who sponsors this Simples Day, to participate. And what they want us to do is, because it'll be virtual this year, is do a seven to 10-minute video about the Simples and a grape in Arkansas and about Tiny Town's role in the grape industry. So, Heather, of course, Heather Minnelli-Peachy and her dad, Chris, have graciously volunteered their knowledge and expertise to do the video for the, for the museum, working with Caroline Franco and Catherine McDaniel. So, that'll be fun. The third item is a sad one. 19th Annual Tiny Town Reunion in an Old Fashioned Pull and Despair smear is not surprising that we chose to cancel that due to the COVID pandemic. We think that's the best thing to do for the safety of attendees and volunteers. So, we're disappointed, but it's like everything else. Hopefully, next year, come in with a bang, so. And the fourth item is really fun, that Tiny Town, it's called Tiny Town's Grape, Sparkling Wine, and Sweet Hospitality. And the bus blogger, James, is a fun blogger who interviewed Heather Minnelli-Peachy to share the dying history of Tiny Town. who interviewed Heather Minnelli-Peachy to share the dying history of Tonton and spotlight current businesses located in Tonton that are still tied to our roots. So he came and visited with Heather at the, um, winery and also went around Tonton, took pictures. Unfortunately, he did this on a Monday, so Mama Z's was closed, Vinicius Inn was closed. Um, but he did still show pictures, a great picture of our, um, uh, water tower. And it's just a really fun video. It's in, it's, uh, the link is on our, uh, report. Uh, so we invite you to watch the interview on, it's only in Arkansas website sponsored by First Security May. Um, so we want to thank bus blogger James for visiting Tonton and for recognizing us as one of, as he calls us on the website, one of Arkansas's spectacularly unique towns. And that is so true. So it's really fun. It's, it's eight and a half minutes. Um, I think y'all will enjoy taking a look at that. So we were happy that he was, did that. He contacted the city first and Megan contacted us and then we, we got to going. Um, then as a reminder, we want to make sure we are still close to the public. Um, if you need in the museum, if you would please call Pam. Her number's on our report. Appreciate that. Then because of Labor Day, uh, we are postponing our meeting until, next meeting in September, till Monday, September fourteenth at six o'clock Beesum. So that's all I have. Any questions? Be sure and watch the video. It's really fun.
One of the points, Smear.
I know, so sad. It's the, add it to the list, right? It's so sad. Bad year.
Yeah. Another question, Beverly. Our heating air unit, is it still working or still working?
Working, working great. All good. Mm-hmm. Thank you, Gene. Yep. It's all good.
Okay. Thank you, Beverly. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to our new business. And we have discarded item A. We'll go to item B, uh, the presentation with the data stream regarding the city roads. James, I'll turn this to you.
Let me, um, let me see if I can screen share here. Oh, you got it. You got it. Um, I've been telling you for months that these guys are gonna come talk to us. And, um, they did want to come in person and, and actually give a, a real presentation. So we put it off as long as we could. I appreciate their, uh, uh, being patient with us. Uh, I think they've got some, some very good information. And, uh, I know that the council will have lots of questions, but they're gonna provide us, uh, with, uh, some data on our current street situations and, uh, make some suggestions on, uh, how we may improve, um, our current streets.
Can you tell us about how much time we want to spend? We talked, we talked, we can get, uh, I gotta stop myself from talking too much about our pavement management program. So I don't know, uh, we'll just kind of give a brief summary and then we can get into it if questions come?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'm Darrell Gardner. I am a member of the First Set Payment Management Team. Uh, First Set Payment Management's not a company. It started with, it's a group of professionals, including Dr. Williams. Here's the Arkansas University of Arkansas T-Square Program, uh, Mike Morgan with Data Stream and myself. And we work with Arkansas G I S and a, and a number of other, uh, professionals to, uh, to meet a need that we saw in our state, which was, we all love our streets and we all want to take good care of them. But maybe give some really good information and empower cities to do a better job with, with that. It doesn't come, your streets don't come with a good rulebook. We know that you're taking your money and you're spending it as wisely as you, as you possibly can. But there are some good methodology and some, uh, you, you need to understand your inventory, understand the condition of that inventory. And then, you know, ask ourselves, are we doing enough to our inventory? And how do we take the allocated money that we have and spend it the best way to optimize the amount of service life we can put back into our, our pavements? And so, um, I don't know if we want to go into regression curves. I don't know what Mike has planned. So I'm, I see that he's got something up here that he's gonna talk about now. And we'll be going back and forth.
Literally, the first step is to know your inventory for Tonton. We've got a great, we, you wanna talk about Arkansas G I S and just how we quickly got the inventory?
Yes, so, uh, as Mike's saying, the first thing that we want to know is, is your inventory. And so if you're a move, a changing city, I know that you're talking about things are changing and maybe you're getting more miles, uh, put into your network. And so Arkansas G I S did a, uh, a great service to our state. And they, they went to every city and county and kind of determined which streets that you oversee. You have some private streets. You have state, state highways. You have private, uh, drives. Uh, really kind of hone down on what it is that Tonton is, is, is to oversee and like what you're responsible for. And they're about eighty-five percent accurate. And, and I don't remember if we went through and said, well, we gotta go pick up a couple more streets or, uh, maybe we drove some private drives that we shouldn't have because we work with the best information we have and it's an iteration. So sometimes we'll sit down and fine tune that and make sure we understand exactly what is your inventory. And so once we determine the inventory, then we want to go use an A S T M six four three three. We'll go drive a hundred percent of your network and do a, a, a non-destructive visual observation evaluation of your pavements. And, and here's a typical asphalt to hot mix regression curve. Um, if you have concrete pavements, that regression curve would look different. Uh, but it's a, I want you to pay attention to the color codes that you see here because they're gonna be prevalent throughout all the data that Tonton has received. And so, uh, when we build a road, it's in excellent condition. There's nothing we can do to it. We can take it off any maintenance list that we have. It's a brand new pavement. There's not a cracking. There's nothing we can do. And that's gonna last for a few years, uh, could be a couple of years. And it all depends on how it was repaired prior to overlaying it. Uh, but it goes from, from, uh, excellence. We'll start seeing some oxidation, some absorption of that pavement, starting to have some hairline cracks. We might be seeing some longitudinal joint cracks from the construction. Uh, but as we start seeing distress that has come in, it turns in from a excellent condition down to a good condition pavement. And it goes further until we start seeing more cracks. We'll see some winter, we'll see some thermal cracking. Um, if it's designed right, we shouldn't see fatigue cracking. But as we see, see cracking, it disappears as, as we see more of it. It'll fall into a fair category, which is designated in the yellow that you see here. And ultimately, is, all the pavements go down this cycle. They don't last forever. And we typically take a fifteen-year life cycle for them. And what we really want to capture is when it gets to this critical condition. This is when you start hearing from your, your, your citizens, because they're starting to see structural problems. We're starting to see more structural problems. Uh, we're gonna see some potholes, some isolated structure. We could have some mass structural issues that are gonna be, uh, prevalent. And we'll talk about these individual distresses in just a moment. But this is the call line. This is when you start getting the calls saying, I need you to come fix my road. And these are very valuable because there's a huge delay penalty. Uh, once we get to critical condition, we're starting to see structural problems. And so there's a big delay penalty. If we don't do something now, between now and a couple of years, we're gonna see these fall into loss. And now we're into reconstruction. We've let, we've let the underlying structure get bad. And so now we're gonna have to spend a lot more money on doing that. And so if, if we go back up to the top of the regression curve, pavement management in cities mostly, what we see our cities doing, Arkansas, is we pave a road and then we may crack seal it. We may do some things to it as we get our calls in. But we really let it fall down to the lower end of the regression curve. And then we mill and fill it or we replace it. We have to add structure back to it now. And pavement management is a systematic approach whereby we can take information and we should plan for these. Dr. Kevin Hall, who's at the University of Arkansas, too, he talked about engineering the life cycle. So that when we see pavements, we should plan for them. We've built them. Let's be very proactive and plan for five years out. Very inexpensive treatments that would be acceptable to the city, the way it looks. Might be time to replace the striping on them. Uh, very good time to do some preventive, uh, things like fog seals. And see, there's some very quick breaking fog seals that, uh, kind of seal it off again. We're starting to be absorptive, so we seal the water off. And we add valuable service life for a lot less money early in the life cycle. There's some other treatments and we won't get into, I don't know if we're even gonna get into treatments, but there's some other things you could do to your pavements. Um, and by doing that, those treatments cost us a lot less and give us some very valuable service life. And service life, and we'll talk about that, that's gonna come into play as well. Because service life, I think you have fifty miles of pavement. And what we mean by, by that is, when you have fifty miles of pavement, you're losing a year off of all those pavements. And so fifty years of service life comes off your network. So when you do work, we need to put in fifty years of service life on average to keep our network where it is. Uh, otherwise, we'll just manage the decline of it. And you mentioned ten thousand dollars. In my mind, in my mind, what you said, ten thousand feet, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And so that's a couple of miles for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. You know, really with the miles you have, that's pretty close to what you need to maintain your network, uh, according to what we look at if we're doing preservation. And if we, if we look at pavements lasting fifteen years, we're gonna get about thirty years of service life we put back into our network and you've got fifty. So now we gotta find, where are we gonna get the other twenty miles of service life? And so our goal is just to empower agencies to have good information to make these decisions so that the money that you have, now I don't know what your budget is, but the money you have, how can we optimize that money so we get the maximum service life back into our system? This is Tonton right here. And so you can, at a, at a quick glance, uh, we talked about the inventory. That was the blue lines. So, so Mike sends his guys out. Uh, they're certified inspectors that go out and according to A S T M sixty-four thirty-three, uh, they'll go out and evaluate your pavements. And so you see the same color codes where you have excellent roads in dark green? I hope you're finding these, Mike. Mike usually does this part. Uh, you'll have, uh, some green roads will, will be the, the good roads that you have. Air roads are designated by yellow. And then we see these critical sections. And we see these critical roads, which remember, those are very vital because they're gonna get very expensive. And some of them may already have some red components to them. But we really need to look at this information. And at a glance, you can kind of see where you've spent your money, uh, where you have spent your money. And maybe, um, maybe you inherited some things, maybe some things weren't designed right. We had drainage issues, but we do see that we have some issues, uh, in your network that need to be addressed. And these are probably the call lines. You're probably getting some calls on some of these streets. Um, because we drive a hundred percent of the network, we can find, uh, individual distresses. And Mike, you know, you can, you can spur me on with anything that you, that I'm missing here. But we find individual distresses such as every pothole that you have in the city of Tonton. Uh, if you look, if you can see that, there's a number one in those potholes. That means that's a primary pothole. That is the kind that people call in about. Uh, so is, we can see very transparent information, but this information's also operational. And so you can see that, uh, James can say, I've got work to do tomorrow because now I know where my problems are. And we also see a number two pothole, which is a smaller one. It could be a divot, uh, that's in the wheel path or on the surface. Most of the time, those are gonna be edge conditions. We're starting to see some, the edge fall off on some of our pavements. And so, uh, we can see those as well. If we're out there fixing the number ones, let's go ahead and take care of those other potholes and et cetera. Um, we also have, uh, isolated structural problems. These are next year's potholes perhaps. Those are about the size of a parking space. Those alligator cracked areas that we'll need to now go out and dig out and repair. Uh, but there they are. They're, uh, do we have a plan for those? How, how do we keep water out of those, make them last longer? You may have too so many of those that you may not have time to fix them. So what is our, what is our solution? Uh, we also have mass structural, which instead of, uh, instead of having that isolated structural several times, a mass structural means that it's, it's a larger spot. It might be three or four of those. It's a condition of the road that we have a large section of the pavement that's given away and we have to, uh, to address that and replace that. A lot of times, these are safety issues. So if you look at an orange condition, notice it's orange because we're starting to see some structural issues with that road. These are the types of roads that we do have to add structure for. It's lost its structure. We need to dig those out and put in a good structural course. Fix what we've got and then, uh, that's be a good place to put some hot mix, uh, as a repair. We also have, uh, surface distresses. Uh, we have the surface L, which is low density cracking. Those are roads that are, uh, gonna be reasonably injured, falling either into the good or good end of the fair category. It just means that there's not a lot of cracks out there. And so we can go out there with a, a crack filling machine, a hot pour machine and fill those cracks by hand. Cause we can make some good time doing that because there's not that many of them. We also have surface M plus, which is medium to high density cracking. And that means that our pavement is now absorbing a lot more cracking. It's taking on more water. And so rather than doing a hand pour of all these cracks, it might be better suited for a mass type treatment. Something that we can take care of all the cracks. We can use as an inner layer, the hot mix or some other wonderful surface courses you can put on those. Uh, after we get through with that, uh, surface crack area, a lot of the counties can, can do a mass crack treatment and then just put a fog seal in there. Fine. But in a city, we're gonna want our surface to look a little different. So we'll probably put a, a micro surface, for instance, would be an option. Or, and one of these mastic, uh, I know Hudson Construction has some mastics that they put down. Or again, we could put a hot mix overlay on those as well. But we're addressing the cracks because if we mill that and don't address the cracks, fracture will get through. We get water underneath our pavement, even though we just overlaid the, the, the road a couple of years ago. Uh, so if you take all that information... Oh, we got drainage. So we also have a drainage icon, which, uh, when the inspector's out there, if he sees noted drainage issues or water standing on the road, it could be noted sediment, then you can tell where water's been on the road. We can report those as well. If we don't, if, if those are drainage issues typically, and we want to be sure while we're after that, uh, we point those out. And you may be aware of them, but we're not gonna find every drainage issue you have. But, uh, it's good information to have to, uh, it, it can lead you to maybe where some of the problems are on that pavement. So, um, because we drive a hundred percent of the network, um, we have a geo-located video. So it's point and click where you can, so we talk about transparency of information. So if you see the information, you don't have to believe us. We drive the road. And so you have ten eighty P video here that, that any place on your road, you can click and it takes you right to that section of road. So from our office, we can sit there and we can drive and look at our entire network without having to drive all over the city, uh, to look at it. And so through this, as you, as you can see, Mike's on a critical condition road. It's critical because we're seeing mass, uh, structural problems. We're seeing a lot of cracking to it. Um, and you can, he could stop at any point. You can see the damage on this particular road, which I don't know, y'all know the name of that more than I do. So, so very quickly, you're able to see, uh, the problems that you have. You also have a lot of good roads. Uh, you can see here's a, a good pavement that you've done not long ago. Um, and it's in green condition. And so you can drive around your, your, your whole city. You can show that you can see where your work has been done. You can see the progress you've made and you can see the areas that we still have, uh, some work to do. Um, and so that's, that's just a level of trend. Y'all have any questions so far before we get into this road? James?
Uh, yeah, you would, uh, as a whole, um, I'm sure you've done hundreds of these. Overall, what, what do the city roads look like in Tonton compared to other cities?
Compared to other cities? Your, your roads are in pretty good shape, James. I think it's a, a network level eighty P C I, which is, understand a network P C I, you can do work on some of your streets and it's gonna improve those streets. But every street that we didn't work on has fallen down another year. And so it, it, they're all getting worse. So being able to put back enough, uh, in, back into your system, it shows me that you have been able to put enough, uh, back into your network because it's, it's a P C I eighty. And, and that's, that's a good P C I. Stop getting too much in the way. You know, we don't, we'll have some triggers on your, your, your main roads that will tell us that we need to do work on when they get to a seventy-five P C I. Everything else is either a seventy or a sixty-five. We'll start seeing some triggers that, that puts those before you as potential projects. Your entire network averages more than, than any one, uh, initial category that'll trigger a road. So an eighty P C I is very good. I, I don't know if it's the, the best we've ever seen, but it's probably up there in, I don't know, Mike, you seen? It's in the top.
It, it definitely may. Things may have just lost their network altogether. Uh, if you're working on your network, you got this under control. There's spots, uh, there's areas that we need to sit here and decide what we're gonna do with our money. Uh, but you're doing good work and you're doing nothing to keep it.
You, you just really have to sit down and see other networks to see how good you really are doing. I mean, it's, um, I know you guys care all about them and you know where the problems are. And we, we, we can focus on those, but you really have a good network. And you have really something good to work with here and, uh, you've done a good job. As far as that goes. Um, so we take all this information and we need to be able to sort it in a certain, so, so we have all this information that, uh, you know, it comes from a G I S. We put it on Google Earth because everybody understands Google Earth. We understand, we can look at things differently than a G I S format. But when you start looking at all this information, and there's a lot of it, how do we take this information and sort it to where it can, it can speak to us? And so this is a workbook for Tonton. And you, you can see that your inventory is right there at the start. You have street names, the links, um, the widths. Uh, we, we have some default widths. We'd like some help on that. If you have widths of those pavements, then we'll do that. It has, it's gonna give you your square feet, your square yards. Uh, ultimately, if you wanted them split out into wards, we could split it out into wards. So everybody would know what the condition of those pavements that are in their ward would be, for instance. Uh, and then you see these same, uh, condition lines. And, and, and Mike, I hate to have you go back, uh, to the map, but if you wouldn't mind. So one thing I do love about what... So one thing I do love about what data stream, the information they provide is when we do an A S T M six-four-three-three, a lot of times you're going to take random sample areas of a pavement. We're going to stop and do a deep dive on twenty-five-hundred square foot here, twenty-five-hundred square foot there and twenty, and we're going to take a PCI, which is a pavement condition index, which goes from zero to a hundred. It was on that regression curve with a hundred being the best and zero being it's all back to gravel. And so rather than, rather than taking those average PCIs, because what happens when we do that, we come up with an average of seventy-five PCI. And based off that, we would color that whole road yellow. We would say this whole road is in fair condition. Through dynamic segmentation, what you see with Mike is, it's, it's not all yellow. In this particular case, we've got a problem spot in there. So we might would evaluate that as fair and you'd have to wait for somebody to call and say there's problems because we wouldn't see it. And this way, we can see that it's not the whole road that's bad, it's just this segment of road that we need to look at. And so we don't need to address the entire pavement, we need to address this area. Now, you may decide to do something to the entire pavement along the way, but at least we're able to, to pinpoint where the work is that we've done and where the work is that we need to do. And you, so you can see along this road, because not all pavements, the same pavement will not regress the same. For whatever reason, it, it's going to be worse on one end, we have turning traffic coming out of our business somewhere that tears it up, but they don't regress the same. And so we need to reflect that in our data so that we can truly see what's going on with our, with our streets. Now, I say that because you're going to see a lot of different codes in this, codes in this workbook. So if you look at each street name, you can kind of see the lineal feed of each condition that you have out there. Uh, so you can sort the information to your best street, all the way to the one with the most condi, good conditions, all the way down to the least. Now there's your, your most excellent roads, those are some that you've recently worked on, I'm sure that he was showing. Um, we really like to look at these critical condition roads because again, those are, are going to be a big delay penalty. So it, it, it may not need anything, absolutely have to have something today, but in very short time, we're going to have to replace it and that's, that's a lot more expensive for us. So we look at these streets, is the drainage right or is there a reason it's that way? Maybe it's just a low priority in your city and I hate to say low, it's the, not a high priority. How about that? Because all of our streets are important. We don't want to say that anything's a low priority, but, uh, it may be that we have so much other stuff going on that this one goes by the wayside because it's, it's not, doesn't carry all of our traffic like some of these others do. And so, uh, kind of our homework assignment for you guys, do we have that? Do I want to sign that?
It's all residential.
It's all residential. So, so kind of the homework assignment is we want to know which are your more important? Which are your arterials? Which are your collectors? And which are your residential? And, and y'all have a master street plan, a lot of times it will have this information already on there, we can adapt that to this workbook. Uh, but the reason is, is that your, your main roads, your arterial roads, the, the main ones within Tonnitown, you know, we're not, we don't want them to get to any sort of condition that's bad. We want to take care of them because they're carrying the traffic. We don't want water in them, we want to keep those good all the time. And so we put triggers in place and we're not going to let it get so bad before it's going to say, hey, this is, you need to look at it now. But we're going to get to it before it becomes a milling field or an overlay that we're trying to do because we're not going to need the structure. We still have the structure to it, we just need to take care of it. It's going to cost us a lot less money. There's some wonderful treatments that are going to look just like you want it to, it's going to make that pavement last longer, it's going to give you valuable service life for less money. And so when we talk about doing, if, if that was your entire budget, for instance, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for those two miles, um, you know, we wouldn't be able to put enough service back in. So we need some lower cost treatments, for, doing early prevention gets us there. And so on an arterial road, we would put a seventy-five PCI as a trigger. A collector road, we might put a seventy PCI, we're going to let it go a little further before we do something to it. And residential, we might, we'll let those go a little bit further still before, uh, the data tells us that it's a project for consideration. Yes, sir.
You go like you're seventy and a sixty in PCI and they're going, what is that?
Okay.
I mean, are you talking chip and seal? Are you talking, uh, is it covering or is it a?
PCI.
Or just?
PCI is a, is a pavement condition index that starts at, uh, Mike, if you have a picture. So on the regression curve, at the very top, and there's little numbers right there to the right, it's a hundred at the top and it goes all the way down to zero. And so when we talk about a seventy-five PCI, that is a trigger that says that pavement has regressed down to where it hits a seventy-five PCI. And so it's going to be in fair condition, it's going to be still in good shape, but we don't want to let it get worse because it's been the most important road in the city. And so, uh, we just have those triggers in place. So a seventy PCI means it's probably starting to crack a little bit, um, it's, it's oxidized, whether we may have done maintenance to it, uh, we may not have. But it's, it's, we want the data to talk to us because if, if that's your most important road, we're going to keep it good.
What, what I was getting at is that?
Oh, what kind of treatment?
If you've done something to us.
Okay.
You know, it's like you said, you're going down the road and you've got piece of it that's bad.
Yeah.
And you got something that would, would you do something different to the, to, so you didn't have a mile of stretched road, but you, you got a quarter of a mile that's bad and the rest of it's not quite as bad, would you do something lesser? The rest of it, would you do the same thing?
No, we, we would want to do the right thing for that section. If it's structural, I probably, we would probably address the structural need of it. A lot of times that's, and, and, uh, there's a lot of different ways of doing that. You can do it in place, you can dig it out yourself, they make some equipment that does it. But we've got to get our structure right on the lost, on that critical area. Um, and it depends on how much structural problems it is, but we want to fix it, uh, right. And then you can do something to the whole pavement, put a surface seal over the whole thing if you want. If we're fixing with hot mix on this end, we wouldn't do anything to it. If we dig down and we replace it and, I don't know how you do it, but, uh, we, we a lot of times dig out, you know, if, if it's bad, if it's not the base, then we're going to replace the base with asphalt. If it gets into our subgrade, we would replace that with baserock. So we always want to improve the layer that we're replacing with it. But at the end of the day, uh, if we fix that out and replace it with hot mix, we wouldn't have to do anything else to that area down there and we would do a different treatment for the rest of it. It would be a, it would be a lesson. So if, if we, we, if we have our triggers right though, we should catch it before we see it to really get into a critical state.
If we could, uh, talk about the, uh, the section of road that we discussed earlier.
South Barrington.
South Barrington.
And why is it going for that?
What condition it's in and what options are available for, um, restoration or overlay? I'll have to get closer where I can see.
And that is, are you doing the entire road?
Uh, from Arbor Acres to, uh, Fletcher. So.
Arbor Acres here and Fletcher south?
Uh, north.
Cool.
Right there, yeah. At the, the Fletcher, that stretch right there.
And maybe just some recommendations on? So you have been fixing some areas out there, it looks like we've got some, I see some green, I was running up and down this road here, might have to see exactly where we are, so we're in fair condition. M plus cracking, Mike?
Uh, we have, uh, M plus.
Okay. So, and, and forgive me for not having, I, I need to have that blown up where I can see it, I'll get my glasses on, but if, if, anytime we have a structural problem, an isolated structure, we've got to dig it out and appear. You've been doing that, I can see, I can see spots where you've already done that. So we're going to recommend you do that. If all it is, is a, is surface M plus cracking, I would recommend just off the cuff, um, there's a rejuvenated mass crack treatment. It's a treatment where you come in and you fill every crack, uh, and then you put some sort of surface on top of that, such as a micro surface, which is a good black, um, it's a thin, uh, durable wearing course. And so it's going to cost you probably about half the cost by the time we do that, the hot mix, but it's the right treatment because we're addressing the cracks. We have a lot of cracking in this pavement. It's either going to be a milling pill at some point and whatever that's going to cost or it's going to be something that we can take care of now because it's still in fair condition. And all we're, we're worried about, this pavement still has a lot of structure and a lot of life to it, we just have cracking that we have to tend to. And so if it's a, a cracking or, and when we have these treatments, I don't know how deep you want it to dive, if you want to get into, we have pictures of these treatments and, uh, as far as a cape seal type of application, but, um, I don't know if that's what we're wanting to do tonight, but we, there are some things that we could do. Main thing is address the cracks because there's a lot of them. We can fill all those in one treatment and then come back with whatever treatments you want to untie. It could be an end of there for a hot mix. Here's a, here's a cracked pavement right here. And this is, uh, Arkansas Department of Transportation, District Four, are we in Washington County here?
Yeah.
Oh, that was the same district as what you're in. And these guys, uh, this is going into Kipra, Arkansas, it's highway one sixty-two, a lot of cracks and, and this is in critical condition where they're going to have to mill and fill it before long. It's just gotten very open. Well, these cracks are large enough that, and, and, and a chip seal would work in some sort of, certain places, but we know that the city's not, that's not really what the city wants to, to look to be for Tonnitown. Typically, we don't. So the counties can do that, but within the city, we want to have a different appearance so we're going to put a different surface on top of these. But the first thing we have to do is address these cracks. And so, uh, this is similar to a chip seal process, except we would have a, it would be different in that we would have a vacuum truck pick up the extra rock and this would not be the final wearing course. Chip seals can bridge over small cracks. This is a, uh, these cracks are larger, they're probably a, a quarter inch and greater. And so you can see many of them are open after the spray. And so this, this broom takes a big wave of, uh, liquid asphalt and it takes it and it pushes it down into the pavement and it basically seals all the cracks in the pavement. There's going to be a chip sprayer that comes behind and puts rock on it. And then now, now we've, we've addressed the cracks. So what type of surface do we want on it? And we can now put an overlay on it, we could do, uh, uh, like I say, a micro surface is a very durable treatment. A micro surface will not work on a cracked pavement, but we've taken care of the cracks. So a combination treatment, uh, would be in order here. Uh, at least one of the mastics treatments might would look good. Excuse it, ergon asphalt and emulsion, that's who I work for, but this is a, a video that we have, uh, I'm trying to promote this, I take that hat off when I come here with Mike. Um, but you can see there's a level of cracking here and this is in a subdivision. And so they've gone in and fixed the structural issues. Um, they could have done a scrub see here because it was, uh, curb and gutter, there's a lot of flowing asphalt and they just didn't want to risk getting anything into the curb. And so they're going to do this, do a chip seal, which we would normally never do in a subdivision. Uh, they're going to have a vacuum truck come in and, and pick up all this aggregate that's there and then they're going to put a micro surface on top of it. And so, uh, this is Rankin County, which is a county in Mississippi. It is a subdivision they have, which is similar to a city and, uh, they're, they're getting some, some good reviews on what they're doing out there. Here's the, uh, the vacuum truck picking it up, we still don't see any, any aggregate in the curb line. And now we're going to put the wearing course that is, that, that a city would, would want to have here. Now you have, driveways are going to back up and turn on this pavement, some treatments are not going to work there, we need to make sure it's a durable, uh, micro surface treatment. And so when they get through, this is going to be a nice and, and black pavement, uh, it's going to hold any stripe that they want well, but, uh, it's just one option. And, and we're not here to tell you guys what you need to do. We're, we're trying to say there's treatments and we need to, to look at doing things early in the lifecycle. Fog seal is the first line of defense, something to do early on our, on our pavements. But you know, this is a good looking, uh, subdivision when they got through, it means and they've addressed the, the cracking need as well with it. So.
Basically, and that's a chip and seal surface when they.
With a micro surface on top. And there's different surfaces you can put on there, there's ultra-thin bonded wearing course, um, there's, there's some thin overlays, you can do a lot of things that you want to, to it. But it's structurally sound, they fixed the structural problems and so we didn't need to mill and fill it, we didn't need to replace it, um, we just needed to make it last another seven, eight, ten years.
Can you describe the fogging process?
Okay, fog seal, Mike's got videos of everything for us to talk about here, but, so this is a hot mix pavement that, uh, is, it's just oxidized is all it is. It's, it's got some oxidation and it's maybe some hairline cracking, the pavement's starting to be absorptive. And so it's just a spray application that will dry very quickly and you can then turn traffic to it. It's kind of like painting. Uh, there's some, uh, this in, in particular, it has a, has some polymer for durability in it, but the rejuvenator, what, what we lose in oxidation is what it's trying, it's trying to put back. It's also because it's getting absorptive, now we're going to seal it off and it's so early that this is going to add another three or four years of service to this pavement for, you know, I can only tell you what the cost of the, the liquid is. If you did it yourself, for instance, it would probably cost you about thirty cents a square yard. Having a contractor do it, I've seen it anywhere from fifty cents to a dollar a square yard. Depends on how much traffic control, who's doing that, you know, how you guys work together on that. But, uh, there's a, there's a step above that, it's a, one of these mastics sealers that has a test and had to get in it. I know the city of Lowell was doing some of it, where they spray it and it's just an early prevention treatment, makes it nice and black and, and durable. So, um, about this treatment left, this is a little, it's a frictional mastic treatment.
So you're saying?
Say again?
So the fog treatment is for, is for roads that just have some hairline cracks, not, not a lot of major cracks?
Correct. If, if they get wider, if they get, uh, to where it's low density and they're wider, we would just go out and hand pour those. I think you could, now, you could always fog seal and then come back and hand pour those larger cracks. We would do it in that order though. We wouldn't want to hand pour them and then fog seal because then the fog seal has no place to go where that crack is, so. But it's just early prevention, it's just, you know, in that way, we can buy some valuable service life, uh, for less. And, uh, I don't know if we're going to continue with, with, you're going to look at some other treatments. We've got, I want to, I kind of want to get to the workbook and, and talk just briefly and show you your network.
There, there's one street that I'd like to, uh, discuss just a little bit.
Okay.
Get a little bit more information from you so that we can make good decisions. Um, going back in history on Barrington, uh, we've got an area back here that for some reason had seeped oil terribly to the point that if you stood on it, you would fall. We had multiple car accidents at that particular curve. I'm going to say we've probably done, you can probably help me, thirty or forty accidents, I would guess.
Several there, sure.
Our fam, our families both had accidents at this, at this curve. Um, so in the past, we have tried, uh, grinding that and it did help. Uh, that same area, the, uh, ditch was so worn and, and deep, we had to put, uh, barriers on the side, which was expensive and, um, really necessary because it was anywhere from a six to a ten foot drop. If you went more than two feet off the road, you could go ten feet down. Um, the other areas on the road, we saw the, the video earlier, we had rumble strips and the black, probably twenty foot long strips that were filled with the black, uh, hot mix, was where we had rumble strips. Rumble strips got so bad, we probably cut them out and filled them. Um, so that gives you a little bit more info on this particular street.
Okay. Okay.
What can you recommend? Because we don't want to do an overlay and have that same problem come back to us with that oil coming up. It always happened during the light rains seem to be the worst because the heavy rains tend to wash it out.
So if we ran the skid truck over, we probably would have terrible numbers. If people are sliding off of it. And so you're saying that there's some some black liquid that has seeped up to the surface of the hot mix?
We've had oil coming up in the past. Chief, you might be able to give us some more info if you've had any recent accidents at the curve back here. But I know of many that we've had because of oil coming up, you can be doing ten miles an hour, fifteen miles an hour, and you're going to slide off that curve.
Mike, can you show us the ultra thin bonded wearing course? So so what our DOT does for they they have a skid truck that goes out and they give them warnings. If it gets down to about a thirty, whatever that reading is, a thirty is starting to be slipped. The higher the number, the more skids you got. When it gets down to a thirty, it may not be to the which that they they're going to report that, hey, we're losing our skid out there. It's polished aggregate, it's it could be a number of things. But this is an ultra thin bonded wearing course. And so so what you see is this paper also has an emulsion tank on it. And this sprays a pretty thick tack coat down there, but it's a gap graded mix. And so it's going to go down about a little maybe three quarters of an inch thick. But it's made for water to drain through it and exit. And so there's a lot of void structure in here so that if we do see some of that trying to to come up, it's probably not going to come up all the way through the mix. But it's made for it's made for those wet weather accidents. It's we say, I wish that our interstates had it on, you know, they put it on some places where they've had wet weather accidents. The pavement was too smooth and then it rains and they get a certain kind of drain, it's a sheet flow over the top of it, then people hydroplane. So they need something that water will drain through and so that we can be driving on on the asphalt and not the the surface. And so it's a wonderful treatment to it's tossed about five and a half dollars a square yard to do. I'm not going to say it's going to be that way on Barrington. If we did the if you look at maybe doing some leaks to that, it might make sense. I know APAC, they have a shears division that had one of those papers. I think Hutchins has one of those papers within their system that they could bring down. It is a specialized piece of equipment, the paper is. And and we can look at some other things. There's a I do know that that would be one I would feel very confident in that what it does is that it that emulsion wicks up and it bonds into that pavement, but it also it only comes up so far and because it's gap graded, it has a lot of room for water to flow down into it. So from a wet weather accident perspective, we wouldn't see water standing on top of the road. And so if you're driving, you know, when you're driving down a highway and you get all this water spray and we can't see there's a truck, you know, we reduce all that with these types of treatments. I mean, it really, you can see a significant difference as far as safety goes. And so our department transportation is doing a lot more of those types of treatments.
How does that bear in cold weather?
It does.
The ice that we have. It doesn't sound good to have an icy road and you got the road that's up short go water instead of.
Well, it should hit the membrane and drain off. If we got thick enough ruts in it, it could be an issue. So our DOT, you know, we shouldn't have the big ruts and and most of the pavements anymore don't have rutting so bad. We may still have some, but super paved is kind of made where they crack a lot more. They don't rut as much. But, you know, if we do have rutting, you know, we would probably want to shake those up a little bit before we did it and do some profile milling to make sure because it's going to hit that it's going to hit that membrane and drain off. That's a pretty thick membrane, so when water goes through it, it's out. We do know that because it's not denser than coming off the top of it though, that that would be a particular road that I would say, we've got ice coming in, I need to treat that. You know, it 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 is going to have some, it is going to hold some of that water in there like you're talking about, but we just kind of treat those if we're going to have some some severe weather like that. But you you got to have have one or the other, you see. And there are, I mean, there's some some sand with seals, I just don't think that they fit a city. There's some other things you can do, but I don't think it fits a city environment with the kind of traffic that you're having in those types of things. So I don't expect any body wearing courses to be the treatment. Depending on what you have on the road, I mean, you might. We have a lot of structural issues on Barrington as well?
Um, no, not that many structural.
Yeah. It might be a consideration for the road, I guess is why, because it does have the same because that membrane's pretty. It's a it's a durable treatment, you probably get ten year service life out of the treatment.
I know that there's just a ton of information and you could go on for hours probably, but if the council has any other questions, you know.
Do you mind if I just show you your network one more time?
Sure, sure.
Because there is one thing that I want to accentuate with what we believe to be a truth here and maybe that condition that you didn't have some, there it is. We got an eighty point four and we showed that to you earlier for a reason. You guys have done a good job with with putting service back in. So what we look at this data is it's going to show you projects to look at. Those projects are going to default into a sheet that you can decide what you're going to do with lockdowns. It's going to cost those out too. So you you'll look at different treatments, you'll see what they cost. And so you can start forming your plan around that. But this right here is the key to thinking about. And you have fifteen three miles. So if they're all two lane roads, you have a hundred and six lane miles of pavement in common. The activities that you do, what this what this sheet right here is meant to do is say, if I do two mile, ten thousand feet of overlay and I put that information in on Barrington, how much service life does that add to my? What else can I do? And so with the money we have, as we start picking these treatments, what we have to keep up with, we have to have a metric of success. When we do treatments, how much service life are we putting back into our network? We don't have to put in a hundred and six lane mile years of service every year. And we we ain't sure that'll average it, but we're just going to manage the decline. And I know you got some C D eight money that we get every now and then, which is good. How do we incorporate that to make sure we get there as well? So when we talk about fog seals, if we did four miles of fog seal, if we did some micro surfacing, it doesn't take long to to find those projects, hey? And then if we do then, how much service life is it going to take? So whatever Mike's done, we're now twenty five lane mile years service to the good because we we did this type of program. Two miles of hot mix, four miles of fog seal and two miles of micro surface. And so you're able to see that that's going to improve your network. So as good as you're doing, James, with an eighty B C I, you'll improve it with a program like this because we added more service than what we're using. This is the metric of success. I know we're going to spend our money wisely and we're going to spend it where it's needed. I've heard my whole life that if you do the right thing on the right move at the right time, you're going to be successful and it's just simply not true. We have to do nothing. And so we want to provide some metrics of success as well so that you know that when the decisions you made, did I put enough back in this year? If not, maybe it helps you plan for the fall. Any questions? Thank you, James.
Thank you, Yvette. Tommy, is that any more questions?
No, I like it. There's kind of digested off.
Yeah, there's a there's a lot to digest, a lot of information there. And I'm sure if you have questions in the future, after we have time to talk about our most important streets that we want to try to, you know, do some maintenance on, I'm sure these guys would be glad to come back and give us some guidance.
James, you got all this information now where we can get it through?
Yes. Actually, you can all have access to it. It's a web based program. So you can log in and you can give it to them. One of the others, you have a few walnut programs. There's some there's some distress books as well. We got a couple of copies of each, but. Okay. If y'all could pass these around and use those. This this has everything that you want to know within the same information is in this book. So you have all the conditions and.
I do have some more of those also.
Yeah. And then you can get them printed very easy. I think Mike provides some information.
Well, I definitely, I definitely. James, put me down for one if I don't. I don't see this.
Okay, I'll make sure you get one.
James, I'd like one too, please.
I'm sorry.
I'd like one too, please, James.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get you one. Really appreciate you guys coming tonight. I know we've been trying to do this for a long time and I just feel like that there was there's a lot of information that that these guys needed to hear, you know, to be able to make some good decisions for, you know, repairs and maintenance going forward. Although we've got a pretty decent system of roads, we realize that, you know, a lot of them need work and.
Probably growing, probably getting more traffic.
We are growing very quickly.
That's the spirit first set, not a company in the paint, is to tell all the guys that we work with, is that we take all of our collective information and we answer your questions, start setting goals, saying, hey, there's loads of extra tools and you might be interested in putting them in. Tommy, you did a good job on that.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you again and feel free to hit the road if you need to need to get out of here. We've got a few more items to discuss.
Next, we'll go on to our discussion of the road improvement options for Artermonte and Floyd Roads. James?
That will be a quick discussion. I've been waiting to get some numbers from the county. As you know, the mayor's talked about doing cost share on Arbor Acres and and we've discussed doing something on South Barrington. But the the two roads that we have to maintain the most are North Artermonte and Floyd Road. Basically, our two dirt roads that we have left. I wanted to get a couple of estimates from them to either do a chip and seal or an overlay on that. I didn't I didn't get that information from them yet, but hopefully I will have it before the next meeting and I'll I'll share that with you. There'll be a whole lot of. We can spend a lot of money on it or we can get it surfaced. I know, you know, that most of you aren't a fan of chip and seal. In that particular instance, I I think it might be a viable option. It's amazing how many chip and seals with roads we have in Tontitown that have been there twenty, thirty plus years.
Put those good fog seal on those like nice and black, you know, a better.
And like you showed earlier, I just talked about the fog seal. I mean, if you don't want to end up with a white chip and seal road, you sweep it off and and fog seal over it. You got a black road, you can strap it and it looks like asphalt. But anyway, we'll we'll discuss that more when I get some information from from the county.
How thick is that though?
How thick is the chip and seal?
All your what you're talking about, your fog seal.
A fog seal.
Not structural, it's just. It's on your accuracy size, whatever size chip. Three inches, a half inch. It's not a structural.
A typical two layer chip and seal is probably what? An inch.
Do we have any structural problems out there, mainly just the surface?
The only real issue we have there on North Artermonte is the drainage. We're going to have to do something there at the the low point in the road because water does cross the road there. Like I say, we can spend a lot of money to put in adequate drainage or we can basically make it a low water crossing there with concrete. I know that's not, you know, the most favorable option, but it it keeps us from having to create it every month.
How much of, I think of a towel would you have to have to put on that?
I believe when Terry Carver designed that drainage several years ago when they were thinking about paving, I believe he had a double forty two inch culvert going across there. It's considerable, an area of drainage right there.
And it would require two of those?
Yes. Well, I I say yes, that's one engineer's opinion.
Right. To do it right, you'd have to box cover it and do it to do it right.
That's correct. And I know at the time, of course, that's been, that was twenty sixteen, I think, when that was done, maybe twenty fifteen, the cost estimate on it was two hundred and fifty thousand to do the drainage and overlay.
I'd like to see some numbers on that and see where we're at doing a chip and seal on it and probably a another set of eyes to look at that drainage to see if two culverts are needed or two box pipes are needed or.
Yeah.
And just see where our numbers are on that.
Yeah, I've still got the plan and scores. We can get some get some opinions on that from our current engineer and go from there.
Okay. Any other questions? Next on our new business is the discussion of an annual contract for the water utility construction services. Again, this is James.
You're going to get tired of hearing me tonight. You already have. What I'm trying to put together and currently there's no one in Northwest Arkansas doing it, none of the cities. I did find some, you know, areas and other places in the country that are doing this. But basically what we're trying to achieve is have a an annual contract for installation of water and sewer lines, basically. You know, the way we do a project right now is we come up with a concept, we have the engineers design it, we put it out to bid, we award the bid to a contractor. It's fairly lengthy process and honestly, you know, the engineering is probably the longest part of it. But what we're what I'm hoping to do is put together a contract that would be bid out annually where contractors would have a list of items, be it water line, sewer line, you know, eight inch water line, valves, meters, you know, individual items that they would bid on. And we would award a contract every year based on that. That would allow us when we do have a project to to complete, whether it be water or sewer, if it's not a large project, all we've got to do is get plans drawn, ease months if necessary, and then we just go to that contract, have the contractor come in, do the line extension and and finish up that way. Like I said, it hasn't been done in Northwest Arkansas, but our engineer has been looking over it right now. I was trying to have it ready for you tonight. Right now, our attorney's looking it over. I started off with a twenty five page contract. It's already up to eighty pages and and the attorney hasn't seen it yet. It's it's going to be a fairly lengthy document, but I really think it will be beneficial to us. It also has a clause in there for emergency work. If we if something happens on our sewer transmission line between Barrington and Nacca, that requires some some large equipment that we don't have, this contract would allow us to to contact the the winning contractor, have them immediately mobilize and, you know, start working on repairs if necessary. Like I say, I wish I wanted to have it ready tonight, but it just didn't happen. I'm going to go ahead and get Justin's ideas on it. Hopefully, I will have it to you. Well, we'll have it ready before the next meeting. And if if you have a chance to to come by before then, I'd be glad to get you a copy of it so you can look at it. And if you're comfortable approving it next meeting, we'll we'll do that and move on. If if not, if you if you're not comfortable with that, we can put it off a month. But we've just been, I've just been trying to get this ball rolling for quite a while and it's it's taken for some time to get it done. But I think the concept is good.
Other companies definitely actually use that. I mean, isn't that kind of like a twenty four hour service? And they put through another job and.
Right.
Try to get here and get ball.
Yeah, I mean, the contract, the contract will say, or does say that, you know, if we contact them for emergency service services, that they will have four hours to respond to get someone on site. So that's something that the the contractor is going to have to take into consideration when they bid bid on. Most of the the utility contractors do that. Any other questions about that?
Well, basically, you're just bidding them to be on standby. Okay, come on, Mark.
Not only to be on standby, but to give us unit prices for a foot of eight inch water line or a foot of eight inch sewer line, you know, a manhole depth of five foot or, you know, and then of course, it lists all of the different depths of possible manholes. You know, you've got your zero to five, you've got six to ten foot, you know, and they'll provide unit prices for each one of those. So once the plans are gone, you can know fairly quickly what the project's going to cost because you've already got all the all the numbers for it.
Won't go present.
Well, they won't change for a year after they bid on.
I mean, their suppliers may jack up the price for the night.
Well, and here's the kind of the rub.
No, it's a year or notice.
Right.
You know, when they can change it.
Right. And here's the rub with that is you're not going to get the best pricing by doing it this way. So I don't plan on using this this contract for all of our water sewer work. Anytime we do a major project like the twelve inch water line project, you know, we're going to bid that out separately because you're you're going to get better pricing that way, obviously. The better, the bigger the project, the better your pricing. So it it won't be used for everything, but just when we need a a short, you know, five hundred foot water main extension or something like that, we've already got pricing to do it, just, you know, use the contract and and you get the job done.
So is this all new install or is this repairs and emergency repairs?
Mainly new install. And we really don't plan on using a contractor to do repairs. We should be able to take care of that ourselves.
Agreed.
This is my installation, not.
Correct, correct.
Basically, that's how we stop it.
Any other questions? Great. We'll go down to item E, discuss the water or sewer budget.
It's me again, Margaret. What I wanted to ask the council for tonight is, as I've mentioned in about everything we talked about tonight, you know, the growth of the city and the amount of work that, you know, we're trying to keep up with. The water department has got to have some help. Working on my budget for next year. And honestly, what I would, what I'm asking for at this time is to amend my budget this year to allow me to add a another employee for the remainder of the year, probably just by the time we get somebody hired, it'll probably be October first. So for the three months of this year and then also to add a second new position next year. So next year's budget will show two more employees than what I currently have. We are just snowed under with work. And currently, we have four people in in the public works department. One of them is a dedicated street person. The other three are water and sewer. One of them is a dedicated street person, the other three are water and sewer. One of those basically takes care of all the locates that come in every day. And I know you've heard me hound them just before, but we did two hundred locates in, in July. And, you know, by the time you, you go out to the site, you make a, you know, mark the lines on the ground, you're looking at probably thirty minutes for each, each locate. That adds up to a lot of time. So basically, that leaves me two guys to take care of all the meter taps, water taps, sewer taps, leak repairs, and anything else that we have to, you know, deal with. And there's just more and more stuff all the time. There's some, some things that we aren't doing as well as we should. Our cross connection program is, is lacking. Our stormwater program, Scott is doing the best he can on that, but, you know, this time of year, he's small with, with Moline. The, the big thing that's really concerning me is, right now, we don't have enough people where we can have someone watching the contractors. With all of the construction that's going on with the water and sewer lines, we're relying on the contractors and their inspectors, the engineering inspectors, to make sure that those are all put in correctly. I know from, from doing this for, for years, if you're not, if you're not watching it yourself, you're, you're missing out. Because there's really no incentives for the engineering inspectors to make sure that it's done correctly. The city needs to be monitoring all of that work that's, that's going on. And anyhow, that's my soapbox. And I know that it's, Cory has the same problem, Todd has the same problem. I mean, we're, we're short on, short on help, long on work. Fortunately for me, the water department can afford to add some employees. And honestly, we just, we just gotta have some help.
Could we, could we add to that, James, any other equipment that we may need for an additional employee, vehicle, or anything else, tool, anything they need?
Well, right now, I don't know. You knew it, but the, the water department bought the old, Brat's old truck, code enforcement truck, the Black Dodge. The police department decided that they didn't need it anymore, and I told the mayor that we would be glad to have it. That was, that allowed me to give my truck to Philip, he's, he was driving an old, a two thousand and eight regular cab truck, which doesn't have a lot of inside storage and carrying electronics and stuff you need, you can't get that stuff inside. So we do have a quote "spare" truck right now, which will get us through. I think late next, later next year, we may have to add another vehicle. But at the time, you know, that's a fairly inexpensive item to, to have to buy.
I'll make Washington add it to the, to the council, to the council meetings or quarters, the council meetings. Thank you. You'll have the amount at, at the council meeting and what you need admitted to.
Yes, sir.
Well, in addition, with the five hundred new homes in these two subdivisions, our inspections are gonna, I, I really don't see us being able to handle all the inspections. So I, I know Roger's gotta be extremely overloaded, and I don't see how in the world anyone could keep up. He does a great job, but I don't see anyone keeping up with the number of inspections he's got. And you're adding five hundred more on to him, so.
Yeah, Roger's gonna have to have some help.
Does anyone second that?
I'm sorry, what was?
No, we just don't have a second.
I'll second that.
First and second, roll call.
Thank you.
Arthur?
Yes.
Larry? Dean?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Don? Amber?
Yes.
Thank you. We will forward that to our, like, council meeting. Any other comments on, on that, James? Anything else you foresee us needing before January?
Before January, no. Probably will try to, you know, we've talked the last year or two about adding a, a backhoe, but I'm gonna try to put that in the, the budget for next year.
Mayor, do you have anything else that you foresee on water and sewer?
I'll say my comments to the comment section.
Okay. Okay, if we have no other comments on the budget, then we'll go to our comments to our council members. I'll start with Mr. Dabla.
I'm just glad to see you, we don't have to see you with all the signs and everything else this year. Everybody's still innovating for a couple more years, so. Keep on doing what we're doing, we're growing and gonna grow with it.
I got it, thank you. Tommy?
One thing I'd like to ask for a recorder to, to do something in your recording of the, of the finances of the city for the year. We had a very, very good year last year as far as the city revenue that comes in. I would like for you to say, compared to last year at this time, we are so much up or so much down, and we're close, and just let us know where, where we were from last year. Because last year, like I said, was a very good revenue year, and just to tell us where we're at roughly in the budgeting process for our money for this year, just. I'd rather be year to year, now year to year, where we were at that time. Pardon? Well, for, for where we were like August last year to August this year. Except if you, if you got there, I know it, it's just close, but it, it gives us an indication of how bad the economy is or how good the economy is, how, how we're faring in, in rough times and good times, just for year to date, so if you don't mind. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Art?
Well. I know we've got, James, don't we have orders like on bone the lawn and keeping your grass trimmed and everything like that? Yes, we do. Well, I've had one person call me or talk to me, and there's about four or five places around town that want to build a TLC. I mean, if they don't wanna do it, I guess we can do it for them and send them a bill. But the grass in the yards is six feet tall, trash everywhere. And just, who's, who's, who takes care of this on the code report? That would be Mark Ramsey, he's code enforcement and fire marshal. Well, you know, I try to keep mine up best I can. I know everybody else around here, they do too, but usually there's damn grasses. And a lot of it's on brand, where a brand is owned or being built, and it looks like this hill in the summer road, it looks like crap. And I know them people want, they ought to be complaining, but.
Yes, yeah, just need to get those addresses to Mark, and he'll, he'll take care of that.
Well, tell him to call me. Or I'll go down and talk to him, and I'll make him enjoy it. You know. But it's just. There are two hundred and fifty-three other thousand dollar homes being built right across the street, and grass six foot tall. I know there a few years ago, they did that, they put a little sign on the, on the driveway out there. So, I'll talk to you, okay?
Thank you, Art. And just, just a comment on our code enforcement, Mr. Ramsey, I have gone through that process, Art, and he is very quick to respond if you let him know, he does his job very well. So if you have his number, can just relay that to him, or call the office up here, they can relay it to him, but he is very good to respond on that if you have an issue. Next, Larry? I'll hit her next.
Really, Larry, thing I'd like, I'd like to say to everybody that, that weren't being reelected and managed to lift that up this, God bless us or God help the poor. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Amber?
Just, I'm glad to see that everybody is well and healthy.
Great, thank you. And last, I've got a couple, two or three items. In our park, I've noticed that we've, we're starting to have a few more families come back in, and I'd like to look at maybe having some extra, extra time spent in there just to sanitize and, and clean what areas, especially the kids', kids' equipment that's out there, picnic areas. Our person that, that handles the park does a superb job. But I'd like to dedicate some time strictly for sanitizing and making sure our park is safe and healthy and ready for, for people in Tawny Town to use without having to worry any more than necessary. But that's something I think that we could address additional, maybe once a week or something, just to have some sanitizing done. Another item is our, our reports, Rhonda, that you brought to us this evening. If we could get back to something that gives us a little more detail on that, I'd like to see some more detail on there rather than just a bottom number. That would give us a little more info in our meetings, if, if you can make that happen. And last item, James, I noticed over on Clint's, I believe it is, I called you about the water, and I know you're taking care of that, but I also saw some street signs that were knocked down or leaning over, about to, about to fall over. If you can address some of those on Clint's, yes. And that's all I've got, I'm gonna turn this over to our mayor, comments from the mayor.
All right, I got a laundry list since we didn't have a last meeting, so I appreciate each and every one of y'all being here, and then hopefully you can hear me a little bit. First and foremost, let me congratulate each and every one of you guys for running again, and even Tommy for sticking it out one more year, even though you're turning your packet. Tommy, I certainly appreciate you sitting in the seat. That says one of two things, either people don't care or people really like what you're doing, and I, and I'll pick, I'll pick the people who like what you're doing because you guys do do an excellent job and tackle a lot of tough issues day in and day out with your city, and, you know, just the reports that you've got tonight with how your road conditions are, I think speaks volumes. James, thanks so much for putting that together and, and giving the report to the council. But, you know, with that being said, you know, we can't lighten up on what we do. I can tell you honestly, about five and a half years ago, when we all took our seats, or the majority of the cityway took our seats, we could look out into the horizon and see this wave coming at us. And folks, let me tell you, the wave this year, the, the growth is still going out of bounds as far as I can see for the city of Tawny Town. More and more developers are contacting us every day. Matter of fact, I think James said somebody came in today looking at another twenty-acre piece on Clint's Road to be developed. You know, with that said, we've maintained over the last five and a half years with current staffing levels that we have. You know, and every, every few months, James is knocking at my door, pleading with me, asking for more help, and I, and I keep cutting him off. You know, Roger passes by me in the hallways and tells me the number of inspections that he does every day, and I keep brushing him off. Cory keeps telling me about the number of calls that his guys are running on and, and the amount of, of service that this city is needing and looking into the crystal ball of more houses being built, and I keep brushing him off as well. You know, council, it's gonna, it's coming a time right now that we're gonna have to put our nose to the grindstone a little bit and figure out some of the numbers magically for next, next year, because, you know, truthfully, our, our employees are, are stepping up, and they've been doing the job for the last five and a half years for each and every one of y'all, and not grumbling or saying much about it to y'all, but we, we absolutely owe it to them to give them the help that they need. As James told you in his report, Springfield School Systems have bumped up their schedule to put the school in Tawny Town in 2021. With that being said, they're requiring that City of Tawny Town maintain an SRO officer. But by doing so, they're gonna pay ninety percent of the salary for an officer, which will only be there about half the year, and then the City of Tawny Town will get a, basically, a free officer out of the deal. So, you know, what I'd like to see us do, if we can possibly do it this year, is let's try to hire Cory an officer to, to go into that SRO role next year. They get him out on the streets, let's get him trained up, let's get him the gear that he needs starting this year to put him out there, and then be looking at putting some more officers online next year as well. Council, I really think that you do need to look into helping Roger get another inspector under his wing, because his, his pace isn't slowing down at all either. You know, inside of our city offices, we keep growing and growing and growing, and keep handling more and more every day. You know, and I need to take this time to thank Michael Belsa, because, you know, putting in forty, forty years at a job is astonishing to me. And for the kind of job that he's been doing is even more astonishing to me, and congratulations to him for putting in forty years of dedicated service. And I need to let you know that I've been talking with Michael, and we're not gonna lose Michael. Michael's has, has decided to come on board with us, and he's gonna take about a month off. And after that, he's gonna walk into our city planning office and become our new, new planning administrator inside of planning, he's gonna put some of his six degrees to use that he has obtained over the years and become a city planner for your fair city. So I'm excited for his new role, and Mr. A is gonna guide him along the way as far as helping him out. And I can't thank her enough for stepping in as our city planner for this past year when we needed her. With that being said, I need to let you guys know that we did receive a grant funding for Clint's Road, a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for a stoplight at Clint's Road. We have received that nod of the head that's gonna get us that stoplight. The grant was awarded for three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're, we're waiting right now in the federal government to approve those grant fundings, but I'm almost positive that it will come through for us. So we also have sent out yet again another warrant study for Penalto Road, and I'm asking also to send out another warrant study for Harmon Road for stoplights there as well. Your city's growing, look around you, look at, look at the people that are coming in. The COVID virus has not stopped Tawny Town's growth. Mr. Granata brought up a, a great point that he'd like to know where we at, where we at from last year to this year. Well, ironically, I've had Pat keep an eye on that ever since this started. Last time Pat and I spoke about it, we're about thirteen percent up from this time last year. Now, the, the county turnback money is down from last year, but for whatever reason, our, our city sales tax has been up. I don't know if it's because people are ordering online through Amazon, or they're using DoorDash or what have you, that's created more tax revenue for the city of Tawny Town, but our revenue numbers are showing an increase. This last month, we were down a little bit, and I'm waiting to see what this month's numbers fall out, but so far, Tawny Town is, is above. You know, in my monthly mayor's meetings, I can't say the same for other mayors in our fair Northwest Arkansas that are struggling a little bit. But a lot of the mayors in Northwest Arkansas, Farmington, for example, and Perrigo, have shown increases in their numbers as well, so, you know. So, you know, I challenge each and every one of you, please, 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 take a look at these numbers, come in and talk to Pat. We're going to be issuing more and more paperwork to you over the next few months, and start making some hard decisions about what we need to do with some of our roads. I'm thrilled to death with the study that James brought in tonight that demonstrates the need, that we do need to stay on top of our roads, don't let them fall behind. Yes, we do have a good road system. Yes, we've tried to maintain to the best of our ability, but now is our time to make sure we don't lose control of our roads, because we also need to be looking at building new infrastructure and building new roads for new areas of town, and putting in new sewer systems and new water lines for the growth of our city. Another thing that we're going to be looking at in the next couple of months, that's going to be coming on your doorstep, is expansion of Tawny Town with annexation to the west. You know, what I'd like to see us do is annex all the way out to the Old Way River Bridge where our water lines have started, because we've asked a lot of those people out there that don't have water services in those areas, if they would like to have water service from Tawny Town, and they've all said yes. But first and foremost, we would need to annex those areas and put it in place for the city to have some sort of control to be able to do that. We've been working with Justin Eichman about looking into that process, and he's been studying it for the last few months, and is going to be turning in some information to us in the near future, and I'll be bringing it forward to city council for that process. So, you know, I wish I could have been there tonight, but I need to take a few days off with family and get a little R and R time for myself. So council, thank you very much for the job that you do. Michael Belsner, thank you for doing what you've done for the last 40 years, and I'll leave you with that, and look forward to seeing each and every one of you all at the city council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. And at this point, we will adjourn. Do I have a motion? A second? All in favor? Thank you, council.